Get on the radio, call Charlie, try to get to these guys and then get out there and get the phone and I talk to Russ. And I can't tell you how many people that they comment personally, something at Walmart or Facebook or just walking down the street. Hey, I just wanted to be that you probably work with people, I see that people. You guys are very friendly to the people that you talk to and I'm not sure that's enough, I've been on that side and I know how that feels. I'm not sure that you appreciate it, uh, with them being every day. But I did choose for this meeting to carefully begin this count and I'll speak on behalf of the council. Yeah, and and ladies did an excellent job keeping a robust place for our constituents and the police department certainly part of that. I want you to excuse me and school, but our police department, city manager, uh, our public works department and personal relations to an actor guy that had a part with it. Thank you for the job that you do and I mean this is really from the heart, it is appreciated. People you want to hear know that you got right there doing the work. Thank you again for the job that you did. Now just let y'all stand up and finish what you found in the hall. Yeah, yeah. Call, call it back, make your way to the front, I'm gonna get some peace and make sure of the call and uh, twenty one be in the photograph. I do all this to go from the, from the back on the uh, web. Y'all want to uh, copy shot? I'm in the front. Yeah, hey. It looks good. Thank you for getting so much. This is biggest event is ready for y'all too. Like I said. I'm not gonna beat up this guy. It's like twenty five years. Like you said too. Okay, Google will tell me, I'm gonna ask that we put this off until Tuesday, this is the address, uh, as long as the town forgets the information. And I apologize to the county, I told you I was forgetting this week, so I put it in the paper. Didn't that, but I do think it's very important, it's fair to give the residents another day on where we are as a city and where we're heading for frame. And uh, as well with that presentation on Tuesday, if you know, we script you the topic that is good that council even have that. So I want to make sure I pretty much in the company have it as well, uh, that will be on Tuesday evening. Moving on to, uh, that's big everybody. We have our minutes for three minutes of Tuesday, therefore we have to ensure by hand on uh, stuff of uh, my, these stuff uh. In the, in the. See, I'll please take a look at those and then hopefully we'll hit the demo for this on Tuesday night. Okay, uh, I have two, like your dad's kids, well, this is a pair of ten. Sure how did it in the past.
Usually all the things that they say, uh, you know, uh, usually uh, this is uh, where it is not only here. Things been obvious to you.
Uh, we don't know who's every good person, but we.
Uh, about this really like, we really like to. It's really like the uh, so it's. Kind of a tornado.
So that he's. Did you get that a lot? Yeah, but just. Y'all, uh, y'all thinking about the opportunity night and uh, save the special time.
Uh, it's a matter of the council choosing they want to be the uh, mayor program that's happened in passes or. We can look out the dance and stuff. Like uh, second page of the job, but uh, usually somebody in town, that first meeting, I don't.
What I try is to keep the party in control, trying to make it so people enter, so we can pay off the house, house stuff on. Uh, skip, um, since uh, uh.
We use, we use the name of uh, and we have to put on.
That are people to also, to talk, all y'all have the video and talking to you.
Where in, and that's right here.
Yes, it is.
Also the problem, we, but the.
Different, different, we did this before there from ten.
Yes, the, the sharing and probably our, I mean, is A, the, the, the multi presentations.
And I said the first time this is. Won't be able to look on the medicine, that's funny.
Out of the three of our positions, right to the paper.
Question. Objection to the paper change case was where it come from, not we want to increase. So. I have a question. What you'll be voting on on Tuesday night is actually whether to, uh, write players, see, or let's say. Yeah, the uh, details of written and the council recently approved the goal of place and and. I need that would come as expected in the presentation, but we can't do it. If you want to do something different, uh, and either over by the details, then we have another motion to change the budget in some way. Or even like the uh, the details of saying, which case somebody has to kind of put in the budget in some way to. We can take the paper to them, but they for some of what. Captain. It's real.
Either way you're looking for, we're gonna be putting the budget comment to get that done. We either write in, mentally was hoping to do, go to the bank or we let it die. Then gave the two minutes to the big man, constantly find that cost to do this, or you don't have. It's not happen.
Right.
We don't do a commitment in that.
Which is. To the word control. Out of the. Can admit budget. Uh, I don't.
Yeah, I'm into questions about the. Like. And.
So men would be, and better, uh, say to protect the, right, buddy. You then because I'm the captain of the budget, you do options of general fund, which is very often from the beginning with. Or cut the budget.
Right, so that's what I'm thinking.
Something I'm taking for, for paper, the way we already said, we don't.
We do, we plan those.
Look at your red, see the manager took that, was that the budget? I think you get that from the county.
We prove.
Yeah. Yeah, just talking about. This. How much do you look at?
Look at um, or see um, just got more than I would.
Tuesday night, we will talk to people. I don't know. Be tougher with the best, count the best.
I would like that some kind of attack from in the future for us to be able to sit down and, and all the city charges, city charges. Uh, it's late, same as, uh, way of me to last time we did this, uh. Which was including ninety two, the uh, the gang coming we had, the little company we had. Uh, by the way, it was a lot of that before most of it was moving. So, uh, I don't know what else left that we can do yet, but I just gotta have a, uh, a kind of timeframe where you said.
I would ask, I would have to answer to the timeframe, uh, I would, we would have that prepared, ready, of state legislation, have you got?
Have not, but I will do that for me, I have to do tomorrow.
I think that's a good, thank you to council, that's the point, because of the schedule, because even if you want the exact timeframe, I wouldn't know. Thinking that it's more than the middle of February.
Right, it's, it's a, it's a real, we're not in front.
We've had a big busy year and I make excuses this to any one, to council, that's what we need to hold the schedule tight. Or, or, no, I two, I have a big system, where we won't get it, it will be done by the family, me, and you.
Yeah, I'll get that to you. You don't have the draft of the uh, of the uh, proposed charter, the, you know, we don't, we don't have the talk about and then we stopped.
Well, I think part of it, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't use that outside of the original, or.
I think, but I think the, it definitely do. And the problem comes when we are looking at things and, and uh, uh. The U C C, um, the code, the orders and everything we have, we gotta start somewhere to try to figure out, uh, what we have and what we don't have. And maybe some of the things we need now, uh, the charter probably next, the first to deal with. But you know. We got some things that we looked at in the past week, so people are questioning about things. Really, we can't find it written down anywhere, uh, so that's gonna be part of this process of looking at what's down, what's not. Out, and down, and it may not be totally true.
Back to, I through that to post, all the post change, what he's talking about, it's we just hope that some important purposes. We don't think that the nexus in our charter, wouldn't do so if you want to see it, we have not, or. And that that charter thing to sell, to be hard, the, this, the, of course, because that whole, I think he's talking about. Robert, and he's made, you know, the, this, to do that, that is difficult to be that.
Exactly, you did it, uh, right, right, even though, and often that you print, taking part in that and everything else, we should be something for me with. Council, until your point of need to be up and order to get the legislative obligation. We, we just need, the council needs to come to some of the conclusions to what you want. We need to get it out to the public domain again, so that everybody that wants to, that's interested, we don't, what's the policy of. Probably needs getting several that care as well, something to look, we have to say, what they like or don't like about the public.
Everybody should know, and.
Yeah, I, I would say, you know, we get it out the public domain probably next season, they discuss the draft and then compare. So this is a starting point, look at the, start figuring out what you like or don't like about it. And then after the public hearing, it's probably the third or fourth week of the month.
Could you, Tom, want to propose a get?
Yeah, I would.
Think that you could be helping run to that.
Like the most, we just want before you get solidated, I'm changing this, I have a lot of the words written. Red line, that, that, that's beautiful, it's just very, very.
The question. I was thinking, we're going to propose, one of the private E S E networks, we'll see.
We can, we can, I think, I think, I think. They have, they can, they can, for example, I guess, for a, yeah.
And I believe it would be you know this I like to do great business that's about the condition of specific for who is dealing with uh what's the impression which go look at all your all the video can you move stuff to right back to the can't look at that uh we've been doing too much just something here run up here everything I think we could just screen so you can get so you promote this being of large government and the things that are really important and with them now that we're watching it in came through so that's you know it's been one or two so probably can correct that okay I'm just big merch first to bear to do to backup assumption expect um I got three half back uh any part of stuff was not top we just like eating with this issue is like in the corner get a so that um I messaged him up a day today the way pulled back up uh I mean thirty forty to my day because again one so I I will have that opportunity um did uh the week five place of here is uh is is happy around it's for this type of stuff say this was for preparation random uh control attack whatever whatever we have uh have a talking out and all um it's it's does that does that yeah come to talk about some we've about this that we yes but we're so how many of us to practice this right because it hasn't been done in a while and we have been at that fairly serious situation you want to good last well any other you got to tell you good last yeah we didn't before we used to back our I'm speaking a lot any questions Victor I'm so impressed can't see or we can I can it's possible or help I can I hear in to separately on coming from second day you the add where that's works happen man need to stop tactic it's important thing what what they so they have to for something that's not uh uh oh suppose I think there's those I the case for the anything but say the one six day there this this all picture like thirty percent by for but maybe but that better that especially just higher count we could have say that from and make it there what we then have what uh don't be six I sent it have thirty seven four so if we and see a it's the uh even obviously person uh to see you 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 to that need for first and where say and to so and work and um I'm but you have just this yeah so yeah but we could we talk one eight right this place the set we get some you um uh talk about this well what done first thing that yeah make this anybody everybody yeah have a uh contact we do to so with not okay um from number eight if they were showing and for our sector annual improvement was broken and that was Mr. President this is this is uh I think it was a four back and uh something the people since it's over that it uh it's can are proven it the step of the yeah this uh like or the contract that the here that like two one to say and if one is I can tell it we had here like or it was off here so that can a uh they find for they 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 have you for this so he probably still professional engagement is different though down uh for 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 they can type of there in the five day on uh they like step day is still right because this and we to point we have like for third day work I two I often probably use that my issue is we're gonna buy a van and give somebody that uses a van every day and hold a van others and you any to every day and then this department uses their van three times a month and extra have to be have to be something that I I think I I need to take care of the van but I also think he's gonna use it every day you for maybe for the side of the van as well and this is important but you don't have a problem doing what you're saying I just said time in this country I'll be good for that turn back up here and second thing is the uh booking crew we have uh I think it'd be one specific individual that takes what you do when they do related and allow the department heads to two individuals be so or three days to do this the reason for that is if we get two crews doing something specific thing uh that's going to take much less time and be able to do much their job as whereas attacking of we pick up trash or come come uh bags or uh can or whatever same if we people putting on lots of about like faster than six people we got twelve people picking up trash outside the road making much faster than six people so uh maybe looking into one individual person that's in charge can here in is that and I do they might sometimes I should with no this we have it's I'm sure it what wait we did try to obviously obviously it's you you let me and they're like there people were using a we have so one or lucky this I'm a few I mean I wasn't gonna say that but say this um are we getting an acceptable number of in place per group which also contracts no that's problem better I call having yeah I six come I just want to do but that if that I know drop is important food that has problem certainly paying best for that that it's for that is not right of people I didn't think about that is that that is everything and things are in this to get the work it's like or to make that happen so to provide any others because is still case I much more to it I I we we kind of events that we so big results of we uh uh correct method plus uh it work can work like if for you found uh with certain house game house of much to be just uh just that correct them ask where and where uh you see that was a for is last you from yeah that's yeah we have that very same we about right it to best end need so or go back and they be and say a person and if they cry after do I still I don't think we need to tell that of still yeah but I do think we that then because the blue couple months maybe fall but I think properly uh in because as I earlier not as long as it's it was a situation both along that so that's same situation and I mean my we about this which plain apart with and I perceive same something that people for process for[955.93]
I said this year before, because I hate this. Because I don't want to talk about this more, because I resent it.
You're welcome.
And that's it. We're not gonna have any more things.
Yeah.
We're gonna keep doing that, and then we'll all take it. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Talking about my, also, they also said about the intersection that is well loaded at Walmart, which is arguably, you know, arguably one of the biggest intersections in the world.
Just being, it's obviously not what we're actually using, it's just we're paying a claim based on the number of points. We can see at the last three months of twenty sixteen, we paid over three hundred and fifty one thousand dollars just in premiums. Now, Blue Box will start self-funding, so we can see the actual we've spent in the last three months of twenty seventeen. That's two hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and twenty thousand. So you can see the savings then just increased to a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Again, self-funded, only have to pay the actual claims. So, um, they draft our account weekly, they send us the summary of what the claims are for this month. And, um, we can see we can have a great savings set just a little short compared to, um, the one for the EPO is color. It's the health insurance, it's Blue, it's self-funded. And October, you can see that costs are creeping up, so I think we'll just be dead for, I think we'll just be higher costs in December. And we'll come from strong side sessions this year, and we'll be speaking next week, so I think that's going to be good. We can have, um, this is insurance, and I think we're trying to use up there, um, like saving accounts and trying to beat up this thing. So, yeah, we can see December is going to be higher. We'll see if it continues to, um, see the actuals this next few months, but it looks far so good. Uh, we can get to the first one, they'll actually pay that star, um, prescription of the code, it's already six hundred and forty dollars. Just the post-remuneration month. These are employees that work on our base plan, on commutation, that have you switched to Medicare or to different operators or something. Again, we can see more to that if we need to go back around the eight, so we'll be annual ethics for the term.
We, we, that health, for health, fucking, prescription. I want to say this is not a good report, I took the prescriptions here as well, but I don't think it's good, but it's the, you know, the positive report. Once we can see that, see the months, we can hopefully, um, add the description, because again, that's my words.
Right.
So, this month eleven, uh, had a hundred and forty prescription.
Well, that's what the thumb.
Yeah.
That's probably, that's probably.
Well, this is a hip was, but certainly. Well, this is a hip was, but certainly. I have. Not that that's, that's probably. That's probably. Well, it's, it's um, they have to provide. That's solution five. For example, the, our protection here. Aim at this several. And um, I can see that this is all inside of the uh, app. It can be the guy that through. A lot of the correct, direct. Um, based on what they find are and tell it forward. Uh, you can even connect. They'll alter everything to way it's done. Um, and then. It's absolutely private, you'll never know. Uh, the only thing that is really not. Like comes into file, so that's you. Instead of those, those, those. One of the plot and so um, I can see that um, the actual level. Probably can't ever want to be up short. Not taken by specific. Uh, 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 to look for. Top which try to swat it and make a plot. Or it's on the. I felt. Where you get to look. Of the first hand. I'd say with thoughts, any with us. With my. I can. That of all. And right. This will be about. So. Call them just like. So if you're bonded for. And that's any. Obviously, people would recognize that. Part of the program. Definitely have that. Obviously, should. Recognize. Not affect target. If it's not. Or also. So that's been. Over tonight. There's one time. Then after. The fact that you deserve. About the program. Differentiate. Now from. That we get this. Which is. Like. Our. How you.
Just had, which you had.
Yeah, before. And that's what I'm trying to do. This is actually. And you. There's something as well. And. Well, this is. On. Well. First one is. This is. What is. That is.
And.
See, how that great. Right. The level three. The competition. And the book was. I guess. Exactly what the program. Is. There's important. And later. Before. He's. I. That's. But in different. Not. That's. We can work. For the. So I could pass. For a lot of things. First of all. When everybody. But. I'm. Five. I. I. Thank you. That's making. That was. You. So. Much. Better. Than.
Yeah.
The first. Uh. Ever. Is. In the. People serve. And people interact. That's how. So it's more private. So. And they have um, they have. Fun. Correct. They. It's really good. Uh, there's a program. This is. It also gets broken. I think kind of get that much. Year four or five. Between. I could be. To. And. As. So. A lot of important. Um, and it's. This is really disorganized. You know, the. Try. To do the. Hand up. Private. And if. It's. Look. Could. Hurt.
If. That's it. Probably.
The. To hang up. What is this? If you can. Take. The. All. Where I. Up. There. Let me. Lower. Then.
Right.
Right. Yeah. Right. It works. This is. That you. It's about. Three. That. Magic. Completely. Not. She. Those. Parents. He. I have. I didn't. Cut. She. I can. And all. See. And I said. It's. There. Cause. This. Not. And you're. Good. But. Tell you. We can. We can. How to. You're gonna. Have. To.
Well.
It's. Really. Or. Probably. Yeah.
It's. It's.
Have the. Oh. That's. Your.
Thank you. So.
Is. Right. You can. That's. And. And the. Box. But. I want. Actually. You're saying. You're twenty four years old. You think about. Or. And you're. Right. And. Uh. Take. Here. Or. Who. Right. We're not. People. I'm just.
Right. It's gonna be. Two.
While. This. Is. That. That's. Our. And it's. Kind of. Person. So. You could. Yeah. And. Works. It's. About. And. If. Then. We can. But. So. For. You. Check. Flight. Is. Paying. If. You're. And. The. Got. Love. Would. To. Off. Right? And. Wow. Yeah.
Yeah. Like. I make. Little.
Four.
Cheek. Yeah. I wanted. Cheek. Cheek. She presents. Tuesday. Mike. That. I can.
That's. On. A. Try. What. It's. 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 So. And. What. I. This. I. They. They. And. Boy. And. The. We have. It's. We have. A little bit. Black. So. And. Checking. You're. Here. You're. You're. About. Boy. And. So. But.
Big. For.
There.
He's. The. Per.
Look. Next. Is. A. Power. Is. The. Power. Rip. This. Go. With. Description. All the information about that. Which. Is. The. Um, I would like to. Who. Have. Music. To. I. This is part of our.
You. That. You. What. The. I got. Good. Hearing. So. It's. You. You. Hello.
Yeah.
That's. Big. Met. But. Groom. You know. Age. Thank you. Right. You should. Try. Thank you.
Just. Now. They. Are. That. Says. Deliberate. Do. The. By. Um, I would like to. Migrate. Some. Specific. To. On. I suppose. Also. Besides. Prepare. So. To. And. Prepare. This. Allow you to. Customize. Application. Or. Why you. Have. Screen. For. This. If you have. Do. Have. Or. So. Say. Okay. The. Have. As. For. Why. This. But. You get. A lot. People. Those. The. All. Get. Um. So that would be. A. You would have to. Get. Everything. To. Help. You. Grab. But. I. Have. Two. Questions.
This. Was. Good. See. I don't.
This year. It was. Hundred. Eight. The. Next. Four. Year. Hundred. Eight. Well. So. Two. Months. Time. And. Point. At. That's. That. Off.
This. Is about three. Dollars. More. Okay. For.
Two. Times. Five. Numbers. And. That. They. The. They. Pull. Once. They. Made. The. Three. And. All. Informations. To. The. Makes. And. Other. And. Track. Track. System. Because. I can. Inspect. It. And. Get. That. Was. An. To. The. Some. Some. Section. Yes. Please.
Ten.
This. Right.
Sounds like it was eight. Dollars. A year. Instead. I've. Been.
Yes.
Something. Stuff. So. Recognition. So.
Yeah. Everybody. Have. A. Question.
I'm. I mean. Well. I mean. Rock. Don't. Spend. It's. Some. It's. I've. Told. Y'all. Um. Got. A. New. Alcohol. Beverage. App. That. Got. Bro. Came. Out. Get an application. For. Pack. Or. Fully. Get. And. What. About. Timmy. Parks. And I think. You got. Price. Sheets. On. Third. Page. Is. The. Our. Alcohol. Sports. Um. Unseen. Restriction. To. So. Required. For alcohol. And. For. What. Is. Schools. Will. Be. Certain. And our current code. Doesn't give you any detailed information. How you make that. Currently. Our code is. The purpose of this section. This is. A measure. Most. Rapid. Travel. On. As. He. Front. Door. Of. Code. Take. Measure. To. Two. Rounds. How. How does that play out? It's. The. Like. Six. Or. Seven. Different. Unit. Island. Has. Some. Poly. Federal. The. Pro. Thus. The. The. That. That. I. Uh. For. He. That. About. See. Current. Code. With. Looking. At. My. Door. Give. Some. We. But. About. On. Name. Of. Minister. Probably. From. The. Structure. On. We. So. For. So. And. To. The. Chris. Public. South. Walk. Street. Road. Highway. Along. Such. Public. South. Walk. Street. Road. Highway. About. The. Road. And. The. Port. Of. The. Near. Station. Ground. Sheriff. Captain. For. The. Um. Considered by the. I. First. Exit. The. District. District. And I think. You know. Have. Wonder. If. Let me just. Ask. And this. Might be. For. You. But. When I read this. The first. Time. First. Came. Mind. We. I wonder if. In. Before. I say. To. The. Building. Or. To.
School didn't give you the chance to go to the school or the school grounds. So this particular case, the school grounds have to be in front, which has to be the first thing you come to. Or if it's in the back, care about school grounds and the ability. So that part is something that I say based on trying to.
If you put it as a care before, it's sort of like you can buy a zip. You can find to do all the work.
Any of the school grounds or.
That I think is another, we talked about a lot of this. A lot of our governance is very, very constant talking rewriting. But when we are rewriting one, which I consider a great idea by the way, I want to be as explicit as we can without any hesitance. Because that's cool. We can be explicit here and be very comfortable with what we're doing. Does it matter about the alcohol usage, the smoking or drug?
It's a problem that we can take care of.
Yeah. Which is, just.
In my career, we've done it to different places and uh but of course it's time to play. You do your thing, but this is a little bit, you know, most of the time we got to track on the council, baby.
It's too vague. I agree that you need to draw. I like this. Maybe it could be uh look at Tuesday. Maybe it could be Tuesday. Okay. Energy, economic well. Power point.
We're sponsored here. Is the air castle? No power points.
Uh I can option. Count, counting.
That's a good part. There's an impact of will.
Good on you, man. I'm still. Thank you a little bit.
All right, let me go very quickly. Um. More villain. Uh first one is an appointment down to the development authority. I should know uh council points members to the development authority. Uh we have a fire term that we feel Tom R who is currently there has stepped down. He keeps why doing some travel, hiring so outside of bad thing um trying to. Best sell the drugs for the people who are retiring at the time. So um. So that's uh we were pressing the county development authority has recommended uh that Brian White is a town commissioner. The point is. That position is in the package. Number two is twenty eighteen bill theater band concert lineup for the year. And it's been did several times about twenty seventeen. Um it is higher, see more um entertainment that is of a more national original significance. I think it's important to keep it in it that it's out of uh try to do this here to bring some entertainment that not only addresses. We've heard from members of the council, but also because in the community, uh echo that changes higher. We want to do this for the same move this in that direction. This is the first step. We looked at some other acts that bigger names and we decided we will add down a little bit. It's very price very big, but it's is in life that is committed in twenty eighteen. Any questions about?
Was it requested to take this in that then was it?
Yes, sir. This is budgetized. This is in budget for.
Always request.
And I put it in there. This is a budget.
Can't I can't.
Oh, I'm sorry. This. Right. Right. Well, certainly I I understand the point. We have uh this thing in the last two years, two, three years. Personally, we can't. I've already very. I would say seventy five percent eighty. Four hours, seven or different brackets. I don't I don't understand, you know. That's really different levels. Um so I think we've done good. As a jack man, little person, so definitely that. Uh anything. Uh I really think this. It's been talked with uh most kindness. The situation we think that we would not. Yeah, we get rid of smiles and websites and see what different pride was. Uh I I personally uh see me. Great into the guy. Gives us um you know. That's the miracle of something that he likes to do and things that is a kind of a deeply pointed practice. From a whole river and that I think it's something that very. Uh issues and making sure that there's something that we appreciate the price and then becoming the thing that has to burn. That we were talking about in the work that they're doing to that. Think citizens are pretty different than that's the significance of wanting to uh can't share that. Uh we. Uh well, I know sponsors at this point, the reason why we brought all the hands to go off at one time. That allows the goals we're saying this is the time of twenty eighteen. This is for um so that's our. Now to can't get anything. But it's time of people coming to talk about too much of the fact that the function that's easy and easy to say.
Obviously that I'm just only familiar with one. How he spoke to some. He tried not really to try to trip her. Sure, that's fine. Hey, something's fucking wrong with me. I'm getting. Yeah, yeah, that's your report about this with monsters machine. It's mechanic. It's not that I don't I share some councilman's uh concerns, but let's see what happens.
Got Billy? Um. Put the number out there. I had no idea. You did.
Give me a bank once.
Um.
What would you do if you were a socialist?
Yes, somebody well, somebody was a good seller for something. Want to eat it for thousands.
You can ten thousand of this.
Ten thousand. Very much. You ought to be very disappointed every time. But yes, that would be very.
When you say that, I mean, that obviously gets. I don't.
Well.
Thirty seven thousand dollars.
I don't want to. I I don't want to miss you. Look at the prices are expensive, so.
We.
Much. To pay for the bands, all the other components, so it's not additional. But.
At at a point. What did that turn on?
Uh uh work working that now so and we started that other day.
Did you have some question to ask?
We did. Uh we did write about that.
Same with me and cause you and yet but I know they're exact. They take consider on this uh on this state in terms of their. I've seen that something I don't buy. I know some stuff about it, but.
It's. General. Yeah.
About the burden, I would have to mention on some people. The point is the Martin said that we do have a burden. The place we have has been here gossip there and so forth and so. So that makes it. That is part of the mill theater as it may be sponsored directly by Chris his. That is the big government we have. Clap here. Is that that first thing? That's separate.
I'm a.
Cause I'm.
Well, it's. Um. Guard system.
It's also the running. It's getting deep down, but that's because it's over. Yeah, sure you're. Thing we're not recording.
Your point did try to get um. But they were ninety five thousand dollars. I went. Oh, yes. That's totally. I love objects. That was my first. And they say that much like.
Yeah, and uh was approved. Here's one. Buddy.
For. Well, well, you know, this out here. The brighter the look, the more money spent in the band, the more they will survive. It's more than they know the different.
Oh, there's no doubt. So look, I'm.
Yeah, it's.
One low one grade. My daddy creates. One job man days and busters and assorted uh issues. What the fuck is that name brand? Eighty two. Twenty five half hour. Back off cost drop. Two. Twenty five eight chups. Uh you go on and on and on. By the way, we got. Pack of coke, one pack of black coke. The the. Our year has been scratched out.
Yeah, we.
Question on that too. This is because you catch one and then.
Okay, we'll spread that.
Alright, and it's. That's. I'll bring a bit.
Hard let the management know.
But we don't have one bottle of paper, one bottle of paper. One pack of food.
Make that.
Uh two years of. Let me uh I haven't been in the end a lot. There's a park around the.
No.
So you know, some of that is quite frankly. It's basically with the law that this is.
Wish.
You see this, that's not safe, it's not. Well, uh the picture of a quick following party, no, I just took it for this. Four hotel rooms for one night, it roomed at two point three six bed and had a big room. So you can understand. Top of the day, but it's.
We are working with the local. Well, we have money aside for giving rough for about two.
Let me see if I can make some pretty clear clues to this guy. I when when Chris came to us with the budget. I personally said that if you have a gigantic problem with staff, contractors, activities there. That practice in the neighborhood and this community outside is too much. That was offensive commitment that now business. That was Chris about this. He brought back the tire that your mayor stated that wanted. You know, I would encourage the council to consider. Chris said before the last three hundred and thirty thousand dollars in contributions to the year, the council for all these bands is thirty seven thousand dollars. Chris from the mayor's side wants us to challenge you to try to. Bring thirty thousand dollars, maybe to work the motors. Uh and try to direct it with me and and just you trust you, you can thank you for doing that. Come back with that representation. Personally think the answer is good. I think the German man, yeah, we have. Was intense and and uh and thank you for that. I clearly understand what councilman would personally say, and I would challenge you uh to do this. You mentioned to wish you could get the part and give it to the. Is that fair enough? Alright. Movie problem.
Yeah.
I remember.
Mister, he's got a agenda. It's uh resolution for this in office for we develop powers. Um we're going to do a. This is how. Power point is all the uh.
Do we have? Some more.
Yep. Glad well. Do. Two.
We do have the power one here. It's not in.
Oh, you have the.
We do have it. It's the fourth attachment.
Okay. We. Okay. We got.
We decided to.
Let me take.
Okay.
Uh. Did you remember uh when the city manager did his uh city manager update mentioned that we. They sent it to the school board. This is the take that it's. Talk about tax allocation. And we're going to be to how the process will real quick and uh. You have the rest of the. So. I don't. We. So really what we're doing is we're not uh discussing tax allocation, which we're discussing development. Power and the manager of development hall um that is thing that is bringing to the state. Just like yourself, I'm here to be in process that we talk to the school board and talk to the council. Uh about this because they have to participate in this whatever important success. So what we did wanted people with us to stay in the nation or something and state location for asking school or maybe you about this and. You know, have idea or they have to count again, you know, you know, yes, we wanted some ability. Make sure they were aware of what we're trying to do. Because we are asking them to take this. Okay, so basically what it had does is that is a district uh that we incentivize. Uh basically create development in a specific area that usually you do is you go to an area that has a hundred. Or is lighted or it's an area that is targeted for uh higher benefit purpose. That area can pass and you go out and try to. And that area. People think about that to offer a flexible financing mechanism with the swastika and other funds that you would rather. Sources and so this kind of augment some of the things you can do. Just functional within developing projects um to future. You also tell me that you support what you do, don't have any money, give you this away for the golden fire and uh to do projects. Then it goes into the actual. It's a. What is that? Just like my ticker. Yeah, I'm trying. One of the things that you uh must have for you can even get to talk about is actually had a development plan. I think uh the spell is. What are your goals and objectives for this area? What are your plans? What are you going to spend the deal on and provide us basically? Basically to the map again that we get for that time. But for that had this. One of the things coming out of. Had how you pay for taxes through. Uh one of the things I'm going to repeat here right now, we're talking about in for more time that tax allocation is not tax increase. Uh so. Anybody who can keep it in, I just want you to know we're not paying an increase in taxes. People in the head listening and liberating people that are outside of tax, other ones in the same purpose as the tax one year. Uh so they're created basically would establish that here one main rate. So. Let's go to the. Like. Like, yeah. So basically what we're saying. A tax revenue generated from a piece of. Hopefully for the tax rates in. Two dollars seventy five cents. I learned that same. City key twenty five cents. I would go to the big street. Next. That ain't what you do. You're supposed to grow up and develop something on this property and that's what this property worth. Looking up. Getting. So it's different. Seventy five. I guess for one thirty and. Cities are nine five cents more. Two dollars goes to. It's the basic principle of that. So increase from. By the end of the color. Recognize the tax. It's type of fucking attack. Of being. Of the. Thanks. Getting to rate is not tax. It also gets. So still set another rate would only give. And this new rate, all the taxing is still only get. It's still only ninety five cents. Uh that's about the dollars in that this. Uh that takes our way to people and to obviate you with general funds uh to pay for. Service of tax. Next. Alright, we're gonna continue to tax these for itself. Hey, this is very flexible. Um it's whatever you put into the. Plan with money and just like the comparison. Uh you can make many things that uh thank you very much. Cities and infrastructure projects. Tax do that as well. And so this is a great way for us to be creative about how we finance for the best of the city. I want to talk a little bit about a pad on um and I want to say for the. I want to talk a little bit about a tad on, um, and I want to say for the record that you don't have to, maybe you get the development power, you don't have to set up a tax management. You don't have to have a block, but you have, uh, tad bond, uh, to have, uh, to have, uh, out of the re, uh, that you have to, and have to develop yourself. You have development coming, so you want to develop in the tad, but you want to, for squirrels. But we can use tad bond to pay for the squirrel lines, use the increase in taxes that the developer, you know, the property, make a bond, and we can, uh, get in the squirrel. That being. Let's hear, make sure all the same. So, uh, it, uh, that is very beneficial. One of the things that I'll say is that we can be very conservative, we have, the development plan, will, you know, how much generation of tax increment you have. So, make sure that you, for, is able to efficiently, uh, to do the first block that you're trying to achieve for that. Flat. Tax exists for twenty thirty years, you require, uh, well, have tad on, you can, the tax incentives and the bonds to the full age. If you were to have that tax before the twenty thirty years, you can, uh, go to, uh, the bait, add an area. Well, say, you could, that, when you have development power, you can stop the tax, it turns to the lease. But you can't have any, uh, separate tax side, you can't have tad in, so, where do you set the tad stuff? For that on stage, uh, for you to do that, that's, uh, so. Yes. Uh, and one of, basically, the main reason why we use tad is to go into the area that is not, a lot of, kind of, helping, uh, this, uh, person. Think about that area for the development. For us, what we're seeing, and we continue to grow, and we're really a lot of growth, and, uh, to, to, really put training on, a lot of our resources, we can return, serve, we can return, supplies itself, or, we can ask, and, and, so, property, so they can have, so, or, or, and, so. So, we, I picked areas that are, they, I, appropriate limits, is how should that, uh, help you, first people, to put developments, where you actually have information, which is, for me, it's like, uh, add, you can, you can grow, and, uh, for us, it's more, it's, 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 growing, for, yeah, for, for, not, for, so, yeah. Next one. Uh, and then, one of the things that is more, was telling people that this was, uh, is, I would be considering giving up, you know, the tax, uh, the interest in taxes, and, uh, tad, quite quickly, in, in, there, that it not develop, or highly develop, anyway, it's not delivering a, 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 uh, thing. Second, one point, please, once that tad expires, all that increased capture can go back to the tax incentive, uh, for the return, so, whatever the increase is, it's, it's like the state government, it's, it's, uh, for, for, so, that, the school system can get different, like, whatever, rate is, twenty, six, uh, and, so, picking an area that's been, uh, just, all these areas that've been, uh, just, for, for, at the same time, and this is going to, uh, change that. Uh, and they're trying to, right, thirty tad, and, 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 most of the time, when you call, you tell me, call me, or something about the city, that you say, hey, I love this, and that's the, how many times I've attended the city, mentioned, has tad, so, we start, it was, uh, uh, starting out, some of those places, uh, and they all have tad, and they use that to help fund a lot of the projects that they're doing. And then you state this tad, that we're trying to make for this, and, uh, we should have one of the, uh, tad, uh, in the state for. Uh, since of the process, we're asking from the council in January, is, we have to, it's a resolution for our delegation, uh, to state that they submit legislation to allow us to put, uh, referendum on ballot, you know, but, uh, and this is exactly what the referendum will say. Uh, they're specifically asking a simple question, uh, do you think the city builder should have development, uh, power, just trying to buy the state, uh, to, uh, surround, uh, the majority is voters in the city limits, yes, then, uh, is that, uh, uh, we, we, uh, the, uh, to, uh, 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 I would, uh, basically, the tad, have to tad. So what we're asking about is the resolution, uh, uh, the delegation, uh, it's hard work, uh, uh, for, for, allowing to do, put, uh, out, for, uh, 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 next. Uh, and just, uh, that.
So. The last one that you have to put in.
What?
Those, those, uh, 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 we were going to talk about, uh, the last one.
Uh, we have, very good.
Just wanted, I'm gonna.
No, that was, uh, when we were going to, then, but we talked about, some stuff that took out other stuff, as we have, a bunch of, uh, property, but we don't, uh, out, or, uh, uh, uh.
Well, while I understand that, you're asking the council to move something that is, uh, a little bit different, constantly, for looking at, for looking at.
No, we're asking, uh, 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 yeah, doesn't have, it's not, it's related, uh.
Okay, that was.
So, we can get, uh, hours, never, anything, ever.
I, I wanted to make sure, uh, because this is a concern, that it's not asking, uh, how's it, the state.
No.
Basically, it's asking for the power to be able to ask for that, so, you come back with a big, serious meeting, that, uh, you and the council, and, uh, we'll know some of the projects we're talking about.
Well, yeah, what happened is, once we get, uh, freaking, uh, uh, we, uh, uh, stuff out, what's gonna happen in that? That, and the projects, yeah, the council, it's, that's when, the project, so, what's gonna get, and then.
So we can have a whole, uh, you can have one, uh, you can have one.
Yeah, part.
You can have one, uh, you can have one, uh, all of a sudden, uh, it, it.
As long as it's not.
That, that, uh, plan, and, uh, we get, uh, the present, uh, the, 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 uh, the, uh, so, I just, uh, uh, not even hours. I just want to make sure that, uh, with, uh, plan.
Good evening, my name is Cam. I have brought the position for our replacement for the project manager. My position is in line. Uh, I'm just trying to get up. Got the thing. There was a vote. Evening, partners. We had a market due there that drove this section. This was back a couple of months when we. I prepared to be directed from this section as a reception. So that section has been operating on the same pump for a couple of months. So, um, so. Monumental Source is the contract with the Red Bull Station in. Time to look at it now. Two rails and stop the pumps. That's where we got the right to do for it. The pump from there, I was getting about right to show signs of. And I have that one through the. And so off the work, we got it stopped. Making a lot of ads to look at the sections of the external pump. Friends will be prepared. This work is being done. So that they're supposed to be there on site. Would be like. Hopefully that would just. The critical issue and I think it's not too big to come out.
It's also what you're talking about. It's coming up two thousand seventeen. It's coming up two thousand seventeen. So, but you're sorry.
It was good. We just kind of worked it. Like that.
Worked out. Alright. Please hit the power one.
Thank you. Uh. This, uh, on the same bottom, it was a problem with the magic degree job that hit. Uh, I'm gonna start with the company. Get into it, I'll be brief. Uh. In introduction, I'd like to start this presentation to clear up about those major concerns of us as quality of payment checks about. And like their project. Right. All payment projects go forward. We'll have to direct attention how they present the options. That was what we think for first. No, we both. Have the best month of the week. Thank you. Uh, any staff will be involved in that big program. And we will take immediate action and they did. If any questions of quality, what's going on? Now we have a concept of engineer, but our health engineer. Uh, we've got some help in this if we need to. We got the.
Uh, there's one thing we can't watch the flow. Especially like.
Let me talk. Yeah. I just want to assure you that no people leave that unsupervised. Start being certain this is a special project. If this project approved every. We are working on a dark day because they have contracted through the. A tentative of mid margin through the. Something when I get done and ship it by three, three projects from the. Make like they can make. I prepared a list that we need to be with short summer growth and we had last three months once a week. Everyone is discounting places and those of the. Based on your field of data and what needs to be done in the ground. Same type of things. Then I always would like to do that. So my steps and staff, this is best condition. He didn't make any. For that though.
Also, this is something. Too many times about this. Once you have already taken place, best decision to make. The council approved of that. A lot of ads do that, sorry, in championship. What council approved that to get that anything else. Uh, that needs to come back to council. Is it not, we're trying to like it to not withstand it. Always any question, let me in the. Uh, comment about that. I think that's the answer to our.
Yeah, that's very important about that. Yeah.
Like. We have the one. Like that. Let more take it. And after that, council. So I forgot to do. Right. Either way, I'm glad. We, we said for example, example, for example. If you cancel it on the day because that road is going to be. Show, show. Then it should, uh, that's what.
Yeah, probably. Well, happy to catch, actually had it exactly. And that was that's the game. You know? I mean, so I want to ask you about this. You are hilarious, they, um. I'm afraid the most is really good. Let me say, mirror like a little bar. Come up out. To about the light down there. If they want us to that. Go to the intersection of. The cable that they. Is actually sliding off. It's, it's dank. I don't think that on. It is. It's something that we'd like to do, but it's that entire stretch of road from my team. From public area. Hundred Road Interstate off what to six one. These things ground down three dozen due to death. I think there's four layers. Any place.
Yes, but.
This. But that, that one top there. Take there that all the time we have in the. And it takes time on it to that one. Do we have some plan for that? Because that's got to be done regardless of. The only temperature is not to. If you. They just. Add to it to. He's just being rounded up all up there.
Yeah.
It is. To get where she's. You get.
Uh, I guess your question is, um, I don't. All of what you're talking about, that whole thing was a lot. Uh, we have to be looking at it.
That's fine, excellent. We have great money. So if the council counts, I don't have to.
Just specifically tell me.
This, this. Cause that's what's going to future. You have to. And there is money, uh, it's a lot of money, but they're free. And that road, that's got to be done.
Okay, so we. Remember, there's a little bit of a problem here. We call this, uh, taking care of. Say, I'm trying to this. I mean, this is a big problem there. Look at it from there. So that's a big. This, I want to do it off. Up there. Yes, it's like. It's like. Really. It's a question. Are you thinking that here? So I believe the point that we can do with this. Doctor here.
Yeah, yeah, the project just comes to the. Where I said. Have come. Yeah, it's a fuckload of place to put. Yeah. Um. Like the just back to make that. Or back to make that.
For professional, thank you.
Yeah, this time we got the. Part of the wall. So we have to act now. Talk to them. Not getting depressed.
Yeah, my. Just as we can support it here. It did. Need to.
Great, wait, that's what we have to. Our.
She. She. That's the control. About the second we call it there. What really is. Awesome. What makes it. We get really big. Awesome. What the project. That's a good point. The other point is you have to call. The rest. That are never seen these. For different parts of the city. You know, I love it. What happened in. Barely a global. It's always gonna be there until we can figure out why. Keep it off. You're never gonna. When the problem is. For instance, it'd be. Fourteen looks. The way this is happening, so. But what we go spend much. Read what we just did a couple of years ago. Like the rest, I think we just. What was the. President of the. So there's a habit. As the. The dress was. So. Rocket. He's the best. One.
With the. So. Right. Yeah. Keep your breath back. Correct. Go back. To. Want to grab. Yeah, run back this. Put one on the. Put your. Alright.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you.
If I have a problem to comment. Ask anyone who's to get a problem to comment. He's a good son. To him as the director and please. Sure. Mark.
My head is. I'm gonna have to. For you. Trust in the face. And I like to. Change the town for fifteen cities. Out like. I understand that with the water. And. It's. Old. Where. So the. After. Eight that that. Chain's were anticipated in. In six and, uh, waters were. Are really hot. But for. So I am. So these guys. Are that. Taking that. Stop for the last four years. And, um, the biggest issue for me isn't that. The. But by the amount that the income is reduced. In order to receive that benefit on. Great. So I haven't been comfortable before. We didn't get still living in. This is. I don't work, I'm not gonna get paid in the future. So every this town, um, matters to me. One reason I love the city because you do so much for your citizens. I really appreciate it. One reason I'm here. So to meet a limit at, at just over two thousand dollars, uh, a month. And twenty-four thousand dollars and one hundred something. The cut up limit, uh, within a. We are seeing here to be to participate in that this town. Yeah, like seventeen hundred dollars over. Your. And it, no, it doesn't seem like it's gonna be out, but when you're unsupervised. And you make a tax check. It's a little bit out. I would say that my care provider, Genshire. They're not committing them or not, but they do only for an apology. They only for seniors, not families, not children. They harbor a hardship this town to. Their members, uh, based on income. And they have exactly three thousand dollars. Uh, so it just seems to me that the cost is so low that so many of us. No one's gonna be able to pay. And that. And, uh, everybody has to. You know, instead of getting us on a level that we're. To see and you got to. All of that. But seniors need help and we have too many days to get that. So I just wanted to put that out there so that council could consider that. Thank you.
Man, we don't play that. Too close to mess with you. Hang on, just kind of stuff I was talking to you.
You know, important on the phone. And I, um, appreciate this one. Um, it is not a discount. Discount is what you get when you go to certain, you go to program. And you get. And all the programs. If they use. I said, bros. I don't have a shop. It's a voluntary thing. With the way they're ready to be doing. By giving subsidy to seniors. It raised my water. Raised my property tax and everyone else. So I was basically in every other package. Was subsidizing. Everyone. We're not talking about people who are on low income or medium income. Talking to everyone just because of the region. Nature. That was wrong. There are a lot of churches in cities that are ready to pay no taxes. They all have senior programs. I would encourage you all to go. It is, in my opinion, not the role of local government. Providing welfare to the citizens. And I then have said it before, I do not understand what makes seniors so deserving. I know, I know families with children. That have very limited income. They can't work during taking their children. City government jobs to give them an account or subsidy to provide them with, um, butter and soup. There are other ways to look at it and it's seen as the council members pointed out. We have not, we don't have the money or the funds to fix the road. Y'all should go to trust and plan. There's been no money because we've had to take money out of general fund at the property to pay for. Orange super for everyone to go. So I applaud you guys and I know you're getting a lot of hits on it, but stand by. It's the only way Sarah and Tom and everyone else has. So beautifully. I mean, I'm here for. I'm sitting here begging, begging you to go out on me. So thank you guys for doing what was right and always hard. Thank you.
I think share with you. At two twenty-five dollars a day. And, um, I'm gonna give it with sharing of the. Water and I don't think we're. Income requirement. Applies to. Act. The eight thousand dollar exemption that we're supposed to be getting for. My. But. Um. I don't think you should get income requirement at all. Uh, the. It's over. It was not. But it. My. What I made the condition for today was. Felt across the face. Said the letter to. You got, um, this party. Last year. To be forced to. Without. Boxing. And, um. Uh. Kind of gotta reply on it. I think we need to reach, we sent me a email. And whatever's got tied up with, um. And tide and she definitely white. And I think you got kind of lost in there. You could. Make that we could rest that. And somebody back with me. You would be great. I have a topic to let you. On. Thank you.
Actually, we may. We'll get. How do you? Just keep that. Talk about. Figure. Down. Place on. Send that. He. Maybe. Do what we. Do. Um. Sure. You get everybody to. Cause that's what we look. Uh, obviously. I'm definitely hoping that. I'd fuck on that. Uh, here. Oh, damn. Um. Right. My. Yeah. It did. It's like. It's. Like. I was like.
That would. Just. See. About. Uh.
Okay. Uh, option of a project. I'll be. Uh, if you want that to write that. I'll be concerned. Uh, uh, skip structure. Especially. Same. I don't have. Right. So. I'm. Right. Right. You know. The. You probably. Might have heard me talking about this. Time. Say. Like. So. Right. Right. Five E S T. Free. Everybody. You must be. Cause. For first. Good. Cause.
I don't know how much you weigh.
You're.
I'm. But I don't know how much you weigh, but. I don't think it. Goes. Oh, okay.
Am I taking? Company. It's a plant. There. See. And. Yeah. The. Uh, I. Pretty. Great. I'm great. Make. Pretty. It's not the only question that I'm simply. What the. Right. So.
They don't. That.
We'll. Believe it or not. Can't. Walking with, uh, both. I think. First.
Yeah.
See.
No problem.
Okay. Ground. Okay. That's. My. We want to get our protection. Uh, have he. On a. Ground.
Yeah.
Let's get.
No. No.
You not. Like. So. It's. It's.
It takes. Sorry. So that's not.
What people are giving.
They couldn't hear. The. Such.
We. Some. Right.
I pretty. I was.
I'm out of P two. African fracking for our tank. And.
Yeah.
That. One. Talk about. Yeah. Talk about. Yeah.
Yeah.
Have. Well. So. Well.
Yeah. Yeah. People.
Right. Uh, number two, two thousand eighteen. I have to figure into. The place that I think of.
Didn't. Did. You.
Is that one? That. Right. Presently, you're expecting office. Three.
I have a couple. When it's up. Also, I vote on. They go. Anyway. Can see.
At the age of. Four. Your. Backers to the. Station. Uh, roadway. This. Twenty fifteen. Make it through. I would prefer to do that. Just. We. Know.
Yep, yep. On. Wait.
Alright.
I mean. Okay.
We're. The. Fair. Only the.
Yeah.
And. Eight. Three. Nine. We.
Yeah.
Part. Do. Like, uh. That should be on there. I think we should. Council for the committee to get there.
Mayor's committee is.
But I will tell you that I'm going to do it.
Hmm.
We are. The mayor. The office committee, the regret to committee, the American board. All of you.
To be on there.
No, but here's what I'm.
Every year, every year.
Tell me two thousand, kind of, you're, you're talking about the points that we're gonna start people down.
Yeah.
Okay, that's everything what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about is every, every people's favorite point, we can remember the different board, that, that's what that used to be.
I'll give two of them. Yes, it is. And also that comes every.
We actually go inside. So you ever see. And that is what we realized. They. So we have. And it's four. And then. Here.
Yeah.
You know, I'll say for three people, you're trying to live in city with brick. They could.
Not a big. Not a big issue, I'll probably save this there. I understand.
Okay, now. Kansas City. Top number five. Out of number six. Out of number nine. Over to F. E, out of number two. G, out of number one. Out of number three.
Yep.
Ten, eight, out of number. Intention. Alright. Three, four. We got the two, opportunity, we're not.
Actually, five. Actually, five. But you took. Five minutes ago. Five minutes ago.
That's important.
Uh. One. Yeah.
We get a. I have. We. Time. If I. Help. What, I'm. Don't talk, talk. It is. Wait, time. Yeah, so. When. All. And the. Was. Boy, bring. Of. Like. Nice. But. I. You should. That's not.
Got it.
Hey, you need to pose the fee, that's how. Once again.